Hey, meeting called to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming here and on WebEx. Um, today is June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven o'clock P. M. Meeting, uh, reading of rules of speaking, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha. This is your community public forum. Your input and cooperation are really appreciated. The Ever Neighbourhood Board is an advisory board, and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep their reports less than three minutes and presentations under ten minutes. And please take a moment to ensure all of your electronic devices are silenced. Okay, that was a moment. The board will be making a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. If you are on a video teleconference, please ensure that your computer or phone is muted unless you are actively speaking. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, which is eight members of this eleven-member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to introduction of board members. Let's start from my right, Vice Chair.
Aloha. My name is John Clark III.
Hello, Trey Gordner, Treasurer.
Hello, John Rogers.
Hello, Janet Dela Cruz.
Aloha, Alexander Gauss.
Aloha, Corey Rosenley. Thank you. Mitchell Tainanes. I don't see anyone else online. We'll move on to, we have a short, um, agenda here for today's board meeting. Thank everyone for coming. After this board meeting, we will be rolling into a candidate forum. So we have next on our agenda, Public Safety First Responders, Honolulu Fire Department. Are they online? Okay, moving on to Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, members of the community. Corporal Pagan with the Honolulu Police Department, District Community Policing. I have your crime stats for May. In May, we had twenty-nine motor vehicle thefts, seven in our area, twenty-three burglaries, eight in our area, one hundred and sixty-nine thefts, thirty-seven in our area, forty-five unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, seven in our area. Sorry, I forgot to introduce that Sergeant Moore Oka as well as the Lieutenant Dave Corralia is online, uh, joining us tonight. We had a total of six thousand eight hundred ninety-nine calls for service, uh, two thousand twenty-seven in our area. That's all I have for the crime stats. Um, I'm open for any comments, questions, or concerns. I did ask about something else, but I'll talk about it after the questions and stuff.
Any question from the board? John, go ahead.
Hey, Corporal Pagan. So, um, on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, we lost two of our EVA citizens, Naomi Meyer and James Rowland. And so far, there's been nothing about what, what is going on. There were, there was a hit. Um, there were, there was a crash, car crash. Uh, um, the driver was a young guy. Um, anyways, there's still no, you know, the police investigation is still ongoing, and I'm just, I'm just bringing it to the attention of the community and to you that we're really waiting for some kind of answer of how this is going to be adjudicated. So.
Um, I, I understand that, um, because of the investigation, what's happening. My understanding is the department doesn't normally just go on about everything that had happened. Um, you may want to reach out to the family to see what they have been told. Um, again, with the investigation, it's not something that HPD would come out and say that, okay, well, this and this. I understand that we do want to know whether it was distracted driving, whether it was speeding, and what the incident was and stuff like that. Um, I'll go see what I can find out, but, um, you know, for more of the details, again, just because of the sensitivity of the sense.
Yeah, I understand the detail. There's just, the point is, is it was March twenty-fourth, and you know, we're in June already. So you think it was kind of a straightforward crash? Um, so that's kind of confusing to a lot of us, especially cyclists, like, isn't someone responsible for this?
Yeah, you would think, but the way the courts work, um, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into presenting a case, especially if they're going to pursue criminal charges. Um, you know, the last thing HPD is going to go and say that the person was speeding would come to find out that he wasn't because the, the data doesn't add up. So, again, unfortunately, it does take a while. I mean, we look at other cases in the news. Some of them haven't gone for years, unfortunately. So, um, yeah, we'll see what I can do. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Any question from the community? Online? Seeing none. Thank you. Move on to Wheaton Seat.
Uh, before we get to that, I just wanted to ask something, if I could. Please, if I'm out of line, please let me know. Um, for the board as well as the community. Um, I just want to say that, uh, based on what happened the last board meeting. Um, you know, we have the candidate forum today. I'm hoping that we can realize that this is a community forum. It's important for people to understand that there's a lot of people that come to this meeting that do not live in the community, such as our gentry members, our city officials and stuff like that. And when they come to a meeting like this and then they're being felt that it's unsafe and they leave because of the actions of people, whether it's in the community or whatever's happening. Um, you know, it's sad. It's sad. Um, and I'm not saying it's, 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 uh, the responsibility of the board, you know, from watching what I saw. Uh, the board did a great job of cutting everything off. Um, however, as a community member, someone that served the community in Ever Beach for twenty-five years, when I see all the videos that are posted online about what had happened outside in the parking lot and inside the building, um, you know, my first feeling is how does anybody take us serious? How does anybody take our board, our community, our elected officials, stuff like that, serious when, um, it gets ugly like that for, for petty reasons? So I'm hoping that tonight with the forum that, you know, we'll have a cordial, um, spirited debate, allowing people to speak and, and keeping it, um, you know, amicable and stuff like that. So that's all. Sorry. Thank you. Uh, we did see, uh, we did start our culinary program. James Gamble High School, we have twenty-three students currently. Uh, we had our second day today. Again, the, the program is run by, um, Wheaton Seat Hawaii partnership with, um, the Honolulu Police Department. Executive Chef is Roy, uh, I'm sorry, Darryl Shinogi from Roy's Koalina. Um, so we're looking forward to a busy summer with that. We are doing, uh, Wheaton Seat is sponsoring that we're, HPD is, uh, working alongside with them. We're doing a homeless outreach on Saturday at Hobush. Uh, we're going to be making some hot dogs and some snacks and stuff like that to go out there and, uh, talk to some of our, our homeless and health system community out there. We'll have some social workers out there. We'll have Kialaho is going to be out there. Um, we're looking for any other, uh, community members that want to come out and, um, offer assistance or, or, um, any advice that they might be able to offer. Um, it's, it's, it's all for free. Um, and again, it's our opportunity to go and see what we can do to try to help the people that are out there. That's all I got.
Any questions for Wheaton Seat from the board, from the community, online? See none? Thank you, Officer Pagan.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving on to board administration and planning, approval of regular board minutes for Thursday, April eleventh. Any abstentions, any corrections?
Sorry, Saturday, we're going to be out there from nine to one, I believe.
It's next day.
We're probably this Saturday, coming, yeah, in two days. Um, I don't think we'll be serving at nine o'clock, but we're going to be out there from nine o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no abstentions, no corrections, uh, minutes will be filed. Uh, moving on to presentations, uh, Amarisco, Kupono Solar, are they here or online? Okay, I know they had their blessing today. They still opened up the site. One of our board members, anybody else went? I know John Rogers went. Did anybody else go? Kupono Solar?
Yes, I, yes.
You want to talk about it real quick since they're not here? Since you went.
Uh, Kupono Solar, they had their opening up today with, uh, and everyone was there, the Navy, Senator Favela, um, uh, Councilmember Tolba. Um, I'm trying to think of any of the, I think that was it for the politicians. If you can help me, Senator. Um, and it was just, uh, it was just great. They presented, uh, everyone. There's a lot of thank you here, thank you there for opening up the, it was quite impressive, the, the whole, how it's all set up. There's goats in there eating the grass. Uh, they got, um, they gave out honey, uh, organic honey that they're making right there. I guess when they were first building, they found all these, uh, bees' nests and they moved them over to the North Shore, an organic farm on the North Shore, let them sit there for eighteen months while they built the, while they built the, the, uh, solar plant. And then once they, they were done with that, they brought the bees back and now they're producing honey. They're not going to sell it. It's just more of a, you know, to give it away when they do these, uh, kind of, uh, shows that they do or, you know, when they're, when they're presenting for different things. But they have a bunch of other projects that they talked about that they're doing with the Navy. And this was a joint venture. The Navy gave them the land and it's, I guess it's the biggest, the biggest, uh, solar farm that has, uh, with, with, with lithium ion batteries. It's about the storage, um, uh, ten thousand homes. Uh, so that, that was it. It was a lot of fun. They had a lot of stuff. They fed us. It was good. It's good. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Okay, moving on to second presentation, Tarco, Verizon Wireless. I think they're online.
Good evening. My name is Sunny Austin, and, um, I'm here tonight representing Tarco and Verizon Wireless. Um, joining me is also Todd Richardson, who is our project manager at Tarco. Um, can I share my screen to show my presentation? That's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, one second, please. Can you see the?
We can see the blank screen.
Okay, it doesn't.
White background.
It doesn't show the shoot. I'm sorry, one second. I'm not sure why I can't share. Give me one second. I'm so sorry.
It just popped on and went off.
Oh, no. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not. Does it show the?
Now we, now we have, uh, like China means hat with on beach.
Oh, no, no, not it.
Vacation picture, uh, your family.
No, I'm so sorry. I'm not good with WebEx here. User error. I just keep showing a blank screen, right?
Yes.
Todd, are you able to share?
Yes. Okay, so when you go to click on your share, I'll walk you through it. So click on your share, your share content button.
Uh-huh.
Do you have the presentation open already?
Yes.
Uh, make sure it's, um, in your options to share it. And make sure you have the proper screen selected, because you might have an extended display on your side. It should, um, show a screen one and a screen two. Make sure you're sharing it to the correct screen.
It shows that, but then when I go, it doesn't show the actual file. It just shows my desktop and.
If you would like to, would you maybe just want to share what's on the presentation? We might, we won't be able to see it, but at least you can share the content of the presentation so the community knows what's going on?
Can I just email you and then if you can share?
Yeah, that works.
I, so I'm so sorry. I should have been more prepared here.
Yeah, send it to me on email. I can pull it up on my end.
Okay, so essentially, give us one second here.
Okay, what we'll do is we will move on to residents, community concerns, and when they're ready, we can jump back onto the presentation. So, um, we're going to move on to residents and community concerns. We'll open up to the community. It's community concerns and announcements. If you have any concern and announcements, please step up to the mic, state your name and your concern and/or announcement. But.
Aloha, Chair. Members of the board. First of all, thank you very much for showing up tonight. Second, uh, to everybody here and out there in TV land, Happy Father's Day, okay? Okay.
What is your name?
Well, I'm sorry. My name is David Aki. I'm going to address transportation issues, okay? Uh, last year I brought up the, I dropped off some material with the board regarding the two acid components that they used in the bus that eats aluminum, okay? They was using that in the bus and the people was inhaling that, okay? This year I can bring up carbon monoxide, okay? They already were rushing, uh, one of the uh, drivers to the emergency. Now the engine is in the back, driver's in the front. Everybody in the middle is up for grabs. Okay, that means they all got, got carbon monoxide, okay? So, there's two issues. Uh, I'm hoping the Transportation Chair will, uh, when recognize that, okay? Only because that needs to be brought up at the AMPO Committee, okay? That's why it's taking action. Last but not least, we was down at the handy van today, looking at the new handy van vehicles. We're already assured a lot of people can get hurt, okay? Just by stepping in and out of the handy van, a lot of people going to get hurt, okay? And, uh, that's on Renton Road, where majority of the handy vans go at the senior homes. But, uh, that's what our Transportation Chair to address, okay? So with that being said, if you guys got any questions, I'm ready. If not, again, Happy Father's Day.
Thank you, Alco. Okay, we're going to postpone again. We're going to jump back from residents, community concerns. We have HFT right here. Oh, sorry. We're going to hold on real quick. We're going to have Honolulu Fire Department come up and give a report real quick so they can go back. I know they're very busy. Thank you.
Aloha. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we had an emergency call. Okay. Um, my name is Bryson, firefighter Bryson, Doudoua, Station Twenty-four, Ever Beach Fire Station. Um, we have statistics, uh, for me. Um, fires, we had one structure fire, two wildland brush fires, three nuisance, two cooking, and seven activated alarms, no fire. Emergency calls, we had one eighty-seven medical emergencies, one vehicle collision with pedestrian, six motor vehicle crash collisions. Before I leave, um, fire safety tip for this month is on power outages. Um, hurricane season is now from June first to November thirtieth. Um, so a few tips for you and your family to, um, plan ahead and prepare in the event of a, a power outage. First, uh, build at least a fourteen-day disaster supply kit, inventory all your items, make, make sure your items, um, inventory items you need that rely on electricity, um, batteries, alternative power sources, knowing your medical needs such as devices, refrigerated machines, medicines. And if you need more information, you can go on Honolulu.gov/dem. Uh, second, appliances during power outages, try to avoid, uh, carbon monoxide poisoning. Obviously, generators, camp stoves, charcoal grills should always be outdoors and away from windows at least twenty feet away. Um, turn off all disconnected appliances, equipment, um, in, in case of a power surge or spike. And lastly, uh, starting July first, the Hawaiian Electrical Company, HICO, will commence their public safety power shut-off, uh, program to reduce the risk of uh, wildfire. Um, as one component of their three-phase wild safety strategy, HICO may shut, shut off power, um, at high-risk areas during periods of forecast, high winds, and dry conditions. Um, this is a program that will be utilized as a last resort. Um, and the power could be cut off for at least several hours to several days. Um, and that's it. Any, any questions?
Any question from the board? Any question from the community? Oh, you got one. You got a question? Yeah, sorry about that. We don't have another mic set up.
So, uh, I just have a quick question. How can we find out more information about that electrical cutoff? You know, especially when you said like from several hours to several days. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you can visit the Hawaiian Electric, a website at HawaiianElectric.com. Yeah, I don't know too much about that, but, um, if you want to.
Sorry, can you come to the mic real quick? State your name and your answer. Sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Sean Akamora, but for more on that information, be, this program, it is a Hawaiian Electric-run program in, so it is be- because of the Lahaina fires. So the information for that will be through the Hawaiian Electric website, yeah. So it's not the Honolulu Fire Department that is, I'm controlling that. If that, I don't know if that answers your question. Okay, but yes, yeah, so like, um, Bryson was saying, the best thing to do is to go on to the Hawaiian Electric website.
Okay, got one more question. Go ahead, John.
Thank you for your service. A quick question on the brush fires. Where, where were they and how extensive was the damage? You had two brush fires.
You know what? I can get back. I'll write that down and we will get back to you on the next, and then we'll look at our information as to where exactly they were.
Okay.
Any other questions?
See, not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Casey Seif out there. Okay.
Are we?
Okay, moving back to residents and community concerns and community announcements. Um, any residents or community concerned, please come up to the mic, state your name, concern, or announcement.
Aloha, I'm Chun James. I'm from the other side of the island. Um, I'm announcing that I'm running for mayor, uh, for Honolulu. I, I don't have one point seven million like the Kai has. I got zero donations from, uh, lobbies and, um, and corporations and PACs. So I'm doing the, the, the cheap way. I'm just coming here to, uh, to visit. It is so nice to see you all here. It's so many, and so many of you could be anywhere else, but you chose to be here because you wanted to help and you wanted to get, uh, to get involved. And I also want to say that I have been at the Honolulu City Council, uh, for over twenty years for free as a, as a community, um, advocate. And you know what? You guys have got a solid city council member. I was so impressed with him when that sixty-four percent salary increase came out just recently. He was so solid without question at all. He just said, hey, I cannot accept that kind of a sixty-four pay raise when my people are not getting it. And so I, I wanted to just put the plaque in there for him for that. And the root, I just wanted to say, I'm so concerned about the rising cost of everything. Everything, our property taxes, our car registration, our insurance, just everything. And, and so many of our young people, parents have to work two, three jobs to put food on the table. And even our senior residents, our senior Kupona, they cannot stop working because they have to keep the cost of living. So I, I, I just wanted to share these, um, feelings with you and also my concerns. And that's why I am trying to, um, do something about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone, uh, want an inquiry, please? Go ahead.
Uh, hello.
I'm sorry, just one second.
Go ahead, Corey.
Just a question. Are we allowing campaign speeches from the community park? Because I thought we had discussed earlier that we were not going to allow that. I just want to point of clarity.
So she, so it was, the candidate forum was for the, the people that were invited. This is, um, an individual that came late. She touched base before the meeting if she could share a few words. Since she would not be a part of that extended, extended period of time this evening.
So just to, it's just only for today, then? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kenny Liu. Uh, this is an update on the cluster on Pohawkapuna Road. This is a good one. This is a good one. Okay, about a month and a half ago, I had a preliminary meeting with the developer and his realtor. It was a good talk and they listened to our neighborhood's concerns. About two and a half weeks ago, community members Tim Lee, Mike McGurn, and I had a second meeting with the developer at my house. It's early in the process and we only have a rough sketch of the revised project. Also, some of the information at this point is only verbal. But here are a list of the proposed changes. And Mike, you can pass that sheet around so people can see. There will be no pool and recreation area. There will be no townhouses. There will be fifteen single-family houses, three two-story houses on the ocean, and twelve single-story, single-family homes, all to conform with the old R-five zoning. We feel this is consistent and compatible with the surrounding community. There will be no significant buildup of the lot, which was a major concern of ours. We know they have to bring in some topsoil. That's fine. All houses will be post-impeer construction. This is to raise their structures above the projected three-point-two-foot sea level rise. The developer addressed our concerns about parking. He said each house will have a driveway and most will have an open carport with parking for at least four cars. He then went on to say, if they need more parking, they can park on their grass like everybody else in the neighborhood. He also addressed our concerns about the lack of communication and said he would communicate with us directly. I talked to most of the neighbors in the immediate area, at least the ones who've stayed engaged. So far, everyone I've talked to seems to think this is a reasonable plan. Of course, we will have to see what's actually being proposed as the project progresses. Me, I'm feeling cautiously optimistic. Everybody I talked to so far understands there's no perfect solution. Tim, Mike, the developer, whose name is Jet, Jet's friend who set up the meeting, and I had a good and productive meeting. Everybody was civil and polite and listened to what the other people had to say. We all agreed to wipe the slate clean. He was a young guy. Sounds like he had some bad advice. In the beginning, we didn't know what we were doing either, and I'm not sure we do now, but Jet said if he had known, he would have communicated with us in twenty nineteen when he bought the lot. After the meeting, Jet and I had a few shots of vodka. It was only eleven o'clock in the morning. It wasn't even eleven o'clock in the morning. We all had a few laughs and friendly conversation. We asked Jet if he wanted his picture taken in front of our signs, in case you haven't seen our signs. He laughed, but said no. We asked him to give a presentation to the neighborhood board when they are further along in the process and have a decent set of plans. He said they would. We told him it was more important to get it right than to rush. We told him it was more important to get it right than to rush. When they come out, we're asking people to ask questions and express your concerns, but be civil and polite. For now, as far as I'm concerned, it's a new day.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Residents can be concerned. Is there anyone else? Raise your hand or stand in line. So I know how many people, how much more people we got. Got two more. Okay, go ahead. State your name, concern, and announcements, please.
Aloha, Tara Rojas. And speaking of, yay, good news. So after over a year and a half, almost two years, fighting for our VAE in this Aho'opoa, the environmental court ruled in our favor to stop that second wave pool. So after that, we went to the HCDA just to make sure, just to remind them. And they also said they will stop all communications, you know, everything with the permitting. And in addition to, they had already had a permit, like, you know, lapse as well. So I would just like to stress again that our VAE is essential. You cannot wait until something else happens, until there's no more. So you cannot put VAE for recreation over VAE for living. You can't imagine that there's still people in the Navy contaminated line, that they're still bathing with bottled water. So that means for drinking, for watering, for plants, for for their for their health, that they're still suffering the effect. So what am I saying this for? Because it takes a committed group of people, time and effort and money, otherwise we had to go and go through that way, through the court system. So I want you all to know that when, again, if they're tried, you know, another business or other developments that are gonna take our VAE, you know, unnecessarily, when we have a limited amount for watershed allotment, that we all stand together, it cannot just be passed through as usual. So just, you know, I'm so grateful that we got to stop that second wave pool. Mahalo.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be real quick. I'm Tony Gaston from the Hunt Companies. And the reason why I want to present some tonight is because there are going to be some changes on the roadways, um, some good changes. So if you remember when we did the construction, um, we created these roads. There's Ingress Egress in going into the VA clinic now shown by those yellow arrows, right? You can go in and out and there's that big red blockade because the rest of the road's not open yet. And then the Makai side of FDR, you see where the blue is, that has two-way traffic on it right now. Well, what we're going to be doing is opening up the Malka side now. And that's going to happen towards either the end of this month or early part of next month. So this is what it's going to look like, close up. You come out of the VA clinic area, you can do a right turn or go straight. Coming down from the Costco side, you can go straight. Here's the changes, see? Now you're also going to be able to turn onto the Makai side of FDR, but both lanes are now going to be going towards the east. They're eastbound. And now, if you're coming westbound, those two lanes are going to be open, so you can turn right to go to Costco. You can turn left to go to down towards the clinic. So I just wanted to share it out with you. It'll be towards the end of this month or at the beginning of next month. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? See, oh. We have one question.
No, no.
The question was if there was any speed tables and they said no. Okay.
There's bike lanes on Kamakila, so when the rest of the road opens, you'll see those.
One more.
Uh, are the EV chargers free?
The EV chargers are free at the VA clinic, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? See, not. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
We'll get two more. Yeah, go ahead. State your name, any concern or announcement, please.
Um, I just have a question. So I'm Deb Garcia. And oh, I want to know who's responsible for the trees on Renton Road? For the trimming of them or whatever.
It'd be city and county. They they own. Yeah, you're talking in the median or?
Yeah, the ones that's on the sidewalk.
Uh, uh, near the sidewalk, they're all, it's all city. That's a city street, so there's city trees.
Because I have went to the website to complain about their tree that's overhanging into my property. That's dropping branches now, like big branches. And when hurricane season comes and those branches fall onto my roof and damages it, I just need to know who I'm going to go for.
Do you do you know about the 311 app, Honolulu 311? So there's an app that you can down, put on your phone. It's called Honolulu 311. And through that app, you can make um a complaint to the city and and they have all the dropdown menus that allow you to say that's a tree, a street tree, city tree, and what's the problem? You write it in and you put the dot where your house is. And I can, I can almost guarantee that they will respond to that. They've responded to many of mine, not always, but most of the time, so.
So I've done it six months ago, then three months ago, and nothing. And there there's a recent tree branch that's in my so I just needed to know who I'm going to go for.
Okay, usually there's a half sheet over there, but the NA, um, the the neighborhood assistant has your info. So they'll, he'll point it, uh, write it out and give it to the right agency, most likely in a mayor's rep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Senator.
Just an announcement from Town Hall Meeting, June nineteenth. We'll be at Sing Park. We'll be talking about the highlight of the budget and legislative updates in it. Community concerns, um, just to let you guys know, board members, the trees that they're talking about on Renton Road always have been a concern for the community since, um, you know, Gary Bautista was on the board. Those trees are not going to be cut because Urban Forest Street is too busy. Um, if you guys look on North Road, ask the city to come and let the residents know on North Road when you're going up North Road this way, including the library. Everybody that's adjacent to the parent, um, the the address, fronting their lot, back of their lot, side of their wall, all that medium where the grass is eight feet tall, the house owner is responsible now. The city is no longer cleaning it. So even the library in front, because the library's parking, park properties in the front, they're in charge. I was upset that they didn't come to the board last month and they already went, not fine. But they wrote one letter to one of the residents who did not know because all those years they've been taking care of it. So I asked them, when did they change the law? So I need them, you know, um, Board Member Mitchell, to tell you guys to have them come out, the Department of Transportation, to come out for the city and make an announcement that every single home on North Road that have bushes, including in front of bus stop, because I told the city, why you not clean the bus stop? They're sitting in grass. He said the homeowner is now responsible of that medium. So do not call anybody from the city. That's what they're going to tell you. And with the trees on Renton Road, they already told us, because I work with uh for Propagand or some other projects. They said they're too busy to cut. There's too much to cut, so they're very behind. So by the time they get there, which we need your guys' help and other elected officials to help, this Wahini, um, get this thing done, we have to push them, force them. Basically, that's it. That's all we can do, because they're going to give you the same excuse. They gotta get out somebody out there, see the tree, and they will come out and say, oh, yeah, we gotta cut them. Then they're going to get somebody to contract it to cut them seventeen years later. We'll get that tree cut. So that's how it works and sorry to say that, but that's the kind of things we need to do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yeah. Any other resident community concerns or community announcements? Oh, go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I wasn't actually planning on bringing this up, but several of my my neighbors urged me to do so. Um, I live down by Puoloa firing range and for those of us that live within a mile or two from that range, the shooting was really loud this week, and so they urged me to bring it up again. And the point that, so the 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 firing range has been deemed incompatible with the Eva Beach community and Capelina as well on that side with the surrounding schools. There've been multiple resolutions passed by us, by the board here, as well as the Senate and the and the uh uh, multiple resolutions passed in the Senate and the the House. Thank you. Uh, uh, and and I think that the challenge for a lot of us living in that area is that no one's actually leading that charge. There's some groups now created to like really dig in on the lead and how bad is the lead and is it getting off site and all these things? But the fact that it was deemed incompatible with the community and there's no, none of our leaders are actually fighting to try to find an alternative location. They haven't even reached out, tried to look for the potential of an eternal location for the range. And I think that's really frustrating for a lot of myself and a lot of my neighbors in the area. And it's something that it's going to continuously have to be brought up at this meeting so that we can keep that message going. Uh, you know, it's a very, it's a very strong, uh, you know, the military, we support them. We want them to have a more modern range. And I think the frustration is the lack of leadership here. You know, myself as a board member, really limited what I can do and so are my community members. And we'd like to see some leadership on getting the range relocated and actually looking into options to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other from the board? Go ahead, John.
Hi, a later note. Um, uh, July is upcoming July, um, I'm I'm speaking for Hawaii bicycling to get this moment and July is Bike Month. So HBL is hosting a bunch of events, mostly in town, uh, but fun events uh in July. And if you go to hbl.org slash Bike Month, you will find a a list of things. And some, one that I'm just going to highlight that's important for our community, I think, uh, is is the Bike to the Train on on July fourteenth, it's starting at eight forty-five, one PM. They're they're going to be using, uh, we're going to be leaving from Neo Blaisdell Park in Pearl City. And also they're going to be using the train uh from Halava Station and going all the way into, coming all the way into Eva Kapalee and then riding the rest of the way to the train. So there's going to be some options depending on how you want to, how much you want to ride, you want to bring your kids. But this is a family event, so that that's the whole point of using Skyline uh to to get to the train. And then once we get to the train, um, uh, we'll take a train ride out to um Nanakuli, uh, Electric Beach and back. Now that costs, so there's, they actually have tickets, so you have to go to the webs- website, hbl.org slash Bike Month to look at that. And you buy tickets and basically you're paying for the train ride uh to uh out to uh Electric Beach. But there, then there'll be lunch either before or afterwards. I don't know all the details yet, but it's there. It's there. So July is Bike Month. Please look at that if you're interested in biking. There's, they have a lot of discounts available and and all sorts of stuff. And then also on um September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four is the Honolulu Century Ride. Um, and and the Honolulu Aloha Fun Ride. So the Century Ride, hundred miles. The Aloha Fun Ride is five or eight miles, so that's a family event, takes place in downtown, all the way out past Waikai. So um, if you're interested or you ride bike and you want to do, and there's different lakes you can do. You don't have to do a hundred miles. You can do ten or fifteen or twenty-five. And then the last thing I got, there's a Board of Parks meeting um on six seventeen. This organization is great. Go to the DPR website if you're interested in the Board of Parks. They're they're coming up, uh, they created two committees. One, one is a maintenance committee and that's this meeting on six seventeen at one PM. And it and it, they're really doing great things on on coming up with a way to do maintenance procedures, plans. Uh, and it's just interesting if you're interested and also that you can talk as that, there's a point where a public can speak at this meeting if you have any concerns or testimony that you want to bring. And then I I just one more thing for Augie, Augie T., please look at your um, for a council member, um, uh, Polba, please look at his flyer. He's doing, and the reason why I'm talking about this, because HBL is going to be at his uh two, on Tuesday, June eighteenth, starting at five PM. Uh, we're going to be out there doing a my, a little workshop on bike safety. We're going to talk about electric bikes and and biking safety in in general. And so the first hour of the meeting, uh, five to five forty-five will be HBL's time to do some training, some uh, some little drills out in the parking lot. And then uh later on, uh, at six, the the real meeting starts with DTS, DOT, I think is going to be there and and uh HBL. So be there to answer questions. Thank you so much.
I gave him a few more minutes because you got the key to open up the room, guys. Okay, I gave him a little bit more, you know, okay, see, he did me a favor, so I gave him a. Senator.
Yeah, Chair, I just wanted to uh chime on the hardworking that the legislation did in the House and the Senate to bring the board's resolution to provision. And the Marines came and my colleagues, Jared Kivokololi, who lives in the district, and Glenn Waikai, wasn't going to hear the bill for the resolution. I encouraged him to hear the resolution and they got very educated in the fact that Kanyui Marine Base do have an alternate area to relocate that gun range. But it's not us to make them do them. Like I said, we did what we needed to do over there. They're still looking into fact on the long range, the sniper range, all of that. But it's up to them to come over here and give you guys an explanation why they're not actually opening them up or relocating them to Kanyui Marine Base. But we did as much as we could at the legislation and I did do exactly what the board wanted. And we did have this thing heard and going through. So we're still working with the Marines. The Marines never came back and gave you guys an answer because we asked them to give you guys an answer, when they can see, if they can, what they can move operations as much as they can or close this all together at Kanyum, at Kanyui Marine Base. So that was the resolution and I'm going to have my staff pull up the resolution in the minutes of what I told them in the hearing. And I'll give it to you guys so you guys know that it was all said about relocating the gun range to Kanyui Marine Base. Mahalo.
Yeah, thank you. Seeing no other residents can be concerned or community announcements, we've got to move on back to four presentations. Nobody on here.
Hi. Are we, uh, this is Sunny Ossink. Are we going back to the presentation?
Wait, hold on, Sunny.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Is there anybody else for residents, community concerns, community announcements? You guys are unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Go ahead. What is your name?
Okay, just make sure you can hear me. It's kind of uh, probably what I'm.
What is your name?
Malika. This is Malika.
Oh, hey, Malika. Go ahead.
Hey, how's it? Hey, guys, I just wanted to um advise the board that um one of the houseless handfuls came to my holiday last night and um he explained to me that at the Puoloa Beach near kind of like as you're going up the sidewalk near the showers, bathroom area somewhere around there. I gotta go over there, take pictures and email them to you, right? But um, there's a sewage seep, so in the ground, there's water coming out. But um, I just wanted to advise you guys about that avenue. Uh, you guys were aware of that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, um, let's let's keep our status, we did have a warning for the environmental court um, in regards to the Palaua site that they proposed to scale the Home Care Village. So I just want to make it aware to the board members and all the developers, Camp Preparation, I know you guys are there too. You guys have committed desecration on many business historical sites. Maybe it be an awareness and maybe you guys um, you guys know that you tend to keep building and building without contacting what the site, what was addicted in that area. Also, you need to check with the linear defendants in that particular Aho'opoa, so that the VA will have you to check who is actually holding the right societal. And we will be assessing a lot of construction, a lot of other developments that are uh that have a lot of desecration for I know and I know for sure. So, yeah, uh, mahalo.
Thank you, Malika. Okay. Okay, going back to you, Sunny. Sunny.
Thank you. Um, Jeffrey, are you, um, were you able to get the presentation? Jeffrey?
Yes, give me one second.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Since we have a moment of pausing over here, does anybody else popped into their head any announcements, concerns? We have one. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to remind everybody that uh Puoloa Beach Park will be closed down on July third. Uh, prior to the Fourth of July, the park is going to be closed. Uh, people can go out to the beach and watch the fireworks, but uh, setting up tents. but, uh, setting up tents and, and partying and stuff inside the park is going to be not allowed. So, so I have to remind everybody.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you so much. Um, again, my name is Sunny Ossink. I'm here tonight, uh, representing Tower Co. and Verizon Wireless. And joining me tonight is also Todd Richardson, who is a project manager at Tower Co. Um, we definitely appreciate the opportunity to present to the Eva Neighbor Board, um, for this, a proposed wireless telecommunication facility. Um, the proposal is, uh, if you can go through the next slide, Jeffrey, thank you. There you go. Uh, Tower Co. proposes a new 120-foot wireless, uh, telecommunication facility to improve, um, Verizon Wireless coverage in the area. This facility will consist of, um, 120-foot monopole that is designed to look like a pine tree, which is, uh, located next to the, uh, Eva Village Golf Course parking lot, which will be accessible from, uh, Malakua Street. Um, next slide, please, Jeffrey. Uh, the proposed site is located at the Eva Village Golf Course, just right just off Beach Road. The zoning of the parcel is agriculture or AG1 with adjacent zones, AG1 and residential. Um, to proceed, the project will require, um, a conditional use permit and a height variance from the city and county of Honolulu's, um, Department of Permitting and Planning, as well as a city and county lease, um, agreement for the site. And the proposed tower will have space for up to three wireless carriers and their equipment. Um, can you go to the next slide, uh, Jeffrey? Um, the, as you can see, the site is the, uh, red arrow there. And, um, Verizon Wireless had identified, um, kind of gap in coverage in the area and the proposed site would provide improved coverage and data speeds, um, to the north of the site, which is Croc Center and the expanding new residential neighborhoods to the north of the golf course and to the east, which is, um, neighborhoods west of, uh, Pi, Pi Hikit Street, as well as to the south, uh, just north of Kapalee Parkway, as well as to the west with Croc Center and residential, um, neighbors in the area. Um, next slides, please. Um, here is the view of the proposed design. It's the, uh, view on the, right there where the monopine or fake tree will look like from the street. Um, the second view also shows it, um, next slide, please. Kind of showed it from the main street. As you can see, that's the proposed design. Um, additional photos there, Jeffrey, the next one. Just want to make sure you guys, this is kind of further away, but as you can see, it kind of blends in with existing. Um, the next slide shows, um, the site plan. As you'll see, it's just to the east of the parking lot there with a landscape, landscaping buffer, um, as well as security fencing to accommodate for the tower as well as the equipment. And then second, the next slide is the, just the proposed elevation showing, um, at the very top of the tower there would be Verizon's proposed antennas and additional, um, uh, spaces for additional carriers if other wireless carriers would like, um, to collocate on that tower. And then, um, really just the benefits, um, of having reliable, um, communication is important for the community. Um, kind of just some statistics there regarding like wireless connectivity in schools and communities and how, um, schools are using digital devices like iPads and laptops and just having, again, infrastructure to support, um, connectivity throughout schools and whatnot. And also really just enhancing, um, the site would enhance wireless connectivity for the entire community, community as well as for, um, emergency responders, E901, as well as local businesses, um, in the area. So that's my presentation. Um, please let us know if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Go on, go ahead.
Aloha, Tara Rojas. I just want to let you know that, uh, you really need to put the cell tower in zones that they're supposed to be in. Resort, resort zones, commercial zones and industrial zones. Keep them away from residential and agriculture zones. There's proof that those frequencies are harmful to the human body. Children Defense, Robert Kennedy said a precedent in court. Supreme Justice ruled against FCC. And I want to add in too, if you all, uh, have been following, you know, over this, uh, past months, the fight to save Ka'ou. So in that meeting, there was other issues that came up and one of them was again for the cell tower. So just to let you know that there was a community in which the parents and majority of the community did not want the cell tower. And just kind of almost like the bullying of these, uh, communication companies just forcing it down their throats, they didn't want it. So in that meeting that I was watching, the same, one single lone mother carrying her baby, had her toddler at her side, that, you know, they were at the park where they opposed that cell tower going in. They did not want it and they cannot use a park now because of the, it's there, the frequencies. And then she was opposing this second one that they wanted to bring in. And then what happened? Nobody spoke up, who was supposed to be listening to the community and they, they approved it. Just like that. Now I want to say this because when you look at the history of how that first one got approved, it was a homeowner association like president that they kind of passed it through. There was corruption and bullying that going by. So take care of your health and the children's health.
Thank you. What is that? Senator, you got something? Go ahead.
Yes. Really nice Verizon come again and saying how much great things they're going to bring to the community and the children. I don't hear a community package. I don't hear what they're going to give to the schools, the adjacent areas, the community, the people. And I, I'm going to tell you right now, here and now, board should not approve any height variance change in any of our community, because it's going to end up changing our whole dynamics of our community when we start seeing higher hotels, higher buildings, higher everything. Because why? The city and county gave them one variance. Once you change one variance, other people can say, not fear for me, you let Verizon go over the height variance for the special use commission permit. Reason why I'm saying this, guys, in Ocean Point, they want to make the hotels higher. But because the board members like me and Teshamalama out there restricted the height restriction in this community, just for those reasons, so that they do not go high, take away our view, take away our win and take away the beauty of Eva Beach. That's the reason why the height restrictions are in and it's going to stay in because I am against the height variance change and I'm going to make sure I put in my, uh, my request against it. I don't want the thing to be changed because that's the reason why we put it in. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions? Oh. Go to the mic, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, last one, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. If you guys can't see me, I am here. Um, just two concerns from the community.
Wait, your name?
Oh, Cory Ascension.
And this is for questions for the?
Oh, no, no, this is for the community question.
No, this is question for, yeah. Questions for the presenter.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. Any other questions for the presenter? Seeing none? Okay, thank you. Sunny, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, Cory, go ahead, I give you one. Go ahead.
All right, I get two concerns from the community. Um, Kilahua Street, the illegal dumping is getting really bad. Um, they stole the signs that we put up. They stole the blockage and from the community, the neighborhood and the housing, it's not from the people that lives there. They're coming dumping the treadmills and everything, so we need to check that out somehow. It's right now, it's a pile right now. You'll take it away, they'll, they'll dump more and it's not from the people in that area. And then also on Renton Road, going across to A Sing Park, you know how in the morning, everybody goes left to go to the freeway? So the guy that's in the line that wants to go to A Sing Park is in a rush. So they shoot across, soon as the cars turn, it's like a, it's like a shield. And then as soon as they turn, they shoot across. Well, Monk was the one got hit last week and he's fighting for his life. Although he was wrong, but he still was in a crosswalk. So it's, it's, right now it's pull the plug or he's going to be vegetable. So just something to bring up to the board about maybe a slow down sign or, or some kind of warning, because they do shoot out. As soon as the cargo, they shoot right into A Sing and it's only 10 foot, 15 foot to the crosswalk. And then there's a lot of concerns, a lot of people almost got hit. So something to think about, mahalo.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the board minute, uh, meeting. We're going to move to, uh, next regular board meeting, uh, scheduled for Thursday, July 11. But before we conclude, you sure there's no more concerns, announcements? Okay, seeing up. Uh, for Thursday, July 11, 2024, 7:00 PM, uh, virtually and also in person and webex, uh, here at the Public Library, a regular board meeting minutes are broadcast every first Sunday at 6:00 PM and every second and fourth Friday at 10:00 AM on Olelo Digital Channel 49. Meeting is adjourned until the candidates form. All right.